Okay.
Although our offices were eighty one.
He's been like seventy one, seventy two, and I said I got seventeen. All you have to do is, I thought, yeah, I did that.
Ready?
I was at eighty five.
Seriously.
Helen.
That thing is when I run my ticket, there's always something wrong. All this stuff open in there, you know, so there's something wrong with it.
Hey, welcome everyone to our city.
Recording in progress.
For February twelfth, two thousand twenty four, glad to have you all here. And I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zomes.
Thank you, council president, council members, Mayor Norton, members of the public, many members of the organization as well. We will count you as organization and public today. I'm excited to be here to introduce and continue the discussion from January when we were talking about supporting transformation. As you can see, we're at part two of that and both myself, Deputy Administrator Parrish and Deputy Administrator Seinhauser will be trying to break this up for you a little bit today. So with that, I would just move forward, kind of establishing where we ended the last meeting. So we had talked through a lot of this, and if you start seeing things that look familiar, that is by design. So a little bit of this is a repeat of your initial discussion. But what we heard from you during that first study session was that there was confidence that Mayo would deliver on the Bold Forward Unbound project, that there was a desire that we need to be listening to the team if we're saying that we need something, a bit of being overwhelmed by the magnitude of what needs are going to need to be delivered on in the next seven years, but also balanced with the notion that we must deliver on those. Talk about transformation and while we're doing that to still retain the character of what makes Rochester a special place, that it's unlikely that we'd ever experience the scale of transformation elsewhere in our lifetimes in that there's a lot of excitement about what we can accomplish and provide for the community through these public and private investments and making sure that we deliver on them well and that there is a desire to organize and resource in a way that allows us to meet the moment that we're facing as we move forward with some significant public and private projects over the next seven years. So I think it's also really important to point out that all of what we are talking about really aligns very well with the city council's strategic priorities of affordable living, of economic vibrancy and growth management, and of course, quality services, we're going to need to continue delivering those day to day. And of course, on recent discussion, we had talked about the importance in those of assuring that we're a place where there is an ability to construct market rate and affordable owner occupied housing. We know there's a lot of housing needs across the spectrum, but that was a key thing that was identified as being important because it's one of our more challenging types of housing. And making sure that we invest in public realm in a way that advances talent attraction, visitor experience, resident experience, and again, supporting that economic vibrancy. And then really working with our partners at RPU to deliver on the transition plan for the post-two thousand thirty power supply needs in a way that is more sustainable. So we landed on this slide towards the end of the last presentation and I think it's really important again that we have had the opportunity over time to be more deliberative in our focus, starting with the community plan in two thousand eighteen. Some strategic priorities that rose to the top for the council at that time and that had continued forward. And with a real deliberative focus on that, we've been able to resource to be able to achieve some unprecedented state and federal funding, grant funding, as well as local funding through the extension of the sales tax. And we're now in this phase of delivery and doing the projects. And so during the delivery of those projects, it's important that we start to transition to thinking about how we prioritize that new and existing revenue to support service delivery in an environment where we have not just our regular capital improvement projects, but this approximate billion dollars of new city investment for transformational projects that we won't see for the next forty to fifty years again. So that is a unique moment in time where all of those things are arriving as well as having to deliver on the private investments that Mayo has announced and making sure the permitting process and all of the coordination of these multi-tier projects goes well in a way that's supportive of the community. And I think the key is that seven years is a long time, but it's also a great amount of time to be able to look at that from a succession planning. All of the teammates that are here today are not going to be here seven years from now. So we have an opportunity to be not just deliberative about delivering, but how we deliver through those projects and thinking about the future so that we continue to sustain and maintain that momentum, which may not mean that we have the same number of teammates now that we have in the future. It may mean that in the middle we have more, or it may mean that we're looking at unique opportunities to have that one-time funding delivered in a way that makes sure that we're ahead of the game after that seven years and when we're looking out again at the future for what's next. And so we know that all of these are not areas that we're going to lead. At not at all times we'll be the leader, but certainly staffing for the project delivery for projects that the city will own as well as making sure that we're considering public realm in a way where we're integrating the new ideas with those ongoing projects in a way that makes it feel like this is for and with the community rather than happening to the community will be critical. And so as we move forward, you'll see how we've been thinking about this of what would we need to be preparing for now, knowing that through seven years, there will be some different points in time where we need to be thinking about things differently and doing so in a way that reflects the community from the past, the present and the future. We also know that in integrating that, seven years is a long time and every day of seven years is going to feel like a really long time. It's a really short period of time in some ways to have all of that investment happening in your community, but it's preparing us to really be resilient, stay the course and continue to make sure that we're focusing on those strategies and making sure that we're honoring the past and delivering for the future. And I would say we have been planning for this for a long time. When you think about the resources that we have been able to make available, we have obviously a lot of planning that happened in the private sector with Bold Forward Unbound happening through the pandemic and really changing a lot of the trajectory for Mayo Clinic, thinking about Destination Medical Center setting us up for being able to deliver on these projects, the ability to utilize the local sales tax to make sure that there isn't investment just happening downtown but throughout town. So folks are feeling the effects of that. And then, of course, we've been able to bring forward and deliver reinvestments with the park levy and our teammates in parks as well as delivering through that state and federal funding. And really, it's the culmination of what we had expected with having the Destination Medical Center opportunity, being able to invest in public realm so that we could attract and maintain additional private investment for the community. And I think what we're seeing is all of that has started to play out into a place of delivering on the projects that have attracted, attracted investment in Rochester. So it is really building from what we have and a number of these different ideas will be shared ideas, shared funding with Destination Medical Center. Some of the city public realm projects are DMC funded, some are funded by the city or in partnership with those state and federal funds. But it's going to be really important that we're coordinating those well and communicating with not only our organization, but the community to make sure that we do stay on top of these in a way where they feel like they are well planned out and coordinated and aren't as disruptive as they might be if we were just kind of going along and doing things as we might if we just had our regular annual capital improvement plan moving. But we also know that it's not just a time of transformation here. Really, what's happening with the way that medical care is going to be provided is going to be transforming medical care across the globe. It's not just a physical transformation in Rochester. We will be ahead of the game for this as others are catching up. So I do think it's really pretty exciting to be able to be in this space and important that we think about what is it going to take to deliver in a positive way. And I guess how, you know, how I would put this in perspective is five billion dollars of private investment, which is not the only investment that will be happening over the seven years, is one and a half times the highest ever annual permit valuation for Rochester happening continuously over the next seven years. So that is some one-time new revenue that makes us capable of being able to deliver on this in a different way. But when you think about the size and scope of our area and the type of kind of unprecedented investment that we're seeing just even in this private realm, this is larger than the Amazon headquarters that was in a much larger population center, it's larger than Southwest Light Rail, it's larger than the MSP Airport Expansion, which was one of the largest airport projects in history. This is the largest investment ever in Minnesota history happening in a city of about one hundred and twenty-three thousand people. So we will have an opportunity to meet the moment and I think we've been positioning ourselves well to be able to deliver. Some of this has already occurred. We've had continuous improvement, looking at our downtown, how we deliver projects, how we work with the community to deliver projects and being able to jointly plan with others to make sure that they're delivered in a way that's coordinated and well thought out, not just for the project that's happening at that time, but for projects in the future. And you've been a part of much of this. So when I think about being prepared, we did the comprehensive plan update. We have significant investment happening at the airport, the local sales tax was extended. But also during that time, you set the stage by going through the Unified Development Code update. There was an integrated traffic study, so a lot of different policymaking to be able to prepare the community and our teammates, existing teammates to deliver. We have some transformational projects happening in the energy space. Obviously, we will start delivering on the Sixth Street project, which is mostly improvements to Sixth Street and the river area, only about six million of that thirty million dollar project is actually the bridge. And then, of course, being able to invite our park teammates to join others up at the public, at the Public Works Center in a new space and then delivering on Link and beyond. So there's been a lot of work and a lot of laying the groundwork for this, so it's not as if we're starting from scratch. But in the delivery phase of the projects, that's a different type of work that needs to happen. And I would say the difference from how we've grown in the past, so the past forty years that's represented here, is that we were growing outward. So we were significantly increasing our geographic size, a lot of new extended utility lines, public works facilities, roadways, the area of our community drastically increased, the size of our population increased outward. And you can see in that time, we didn't grow very much when we're considering the number of teammates available to deliver on those services. That doesn't mean we didn't have technology and processes that we improved on or that we didn't be, you know, we were obviously strategic about having contractual partners for some of the work that we do. But this is an opportunity now as we're growing up to look at this differently over that seven-year time span and prepare ourselves for the future. And again, we've been trying to do this with each teammate that we have, so building capacity across our organization, making sure that we're centering people in the organization with each other and problem solving, reaching across the organization to help make sure that we are gaining as much capacity as possible out of every existing position that we have and also setting ourselves up with a mindset and a framework for how we approach things in a way where we can optimize our resources. But we're also in a place where we can't just do more with what we have. We need to really position ourselves to be able to deliver during this span of time where a lot of different things are going to be happening at once and be deliberative about how we also continue to look at our resources for the future beyond the delivery stage of this. And so with that, I would turn it over to Deputy Administrator Parrish to talk a little bit more about the work we've been doing in our organization with teammates to understand the pressure that has already been building in the how do we gain resources to be able to deliver transformation? And of course, across a now hybrid work environment, which changes capacity as well as across needing to deliver on these projects post-pandemic, so I would turn it over to Erin.
All right, really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I have the distinct privilege to really try to connect this important recommendation that you're going to review this evening with the type of organization that we want to become and the type of organization that we're trying to build. You know, it really is a reflection when we talk about these different bullet points this evening, about why and how we do things, really helping advance or hinder how we can be a high-performance organization, how we can build a positive organizational culture and build a culture that ultimately translates into a high level of teammate engagement. We're also going to try to convey to you this evening why and how we do things will also help or hinder our efforts to effectively support the transformation that you've heard about both last meeting and further this evening as well. We're going to try to connect this recommendation to some important things that we're teaching in our High Performance Organization Academy, some of those principles that City Administrator Zomes just reflected in her twelve important bullet points in terms of how we can be an HPO organization. It starts with teammate alignment, really getting the right teammates in place to support the type of transformation and all these important projects that are going to ultimately impact and imprint on Rochester in the future. We have the opportunity to use this recommendation this evening to grow our own leaves. That's an important thing, we say. We're in a war for talent and we have the ability to go out and recruit talent, that's important. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But we also, you know, have the opportunity to create experiences for people to develop them and grow our own leaves. Same to be said with succession planning, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But this recommendation provides the opportunity to think about how we develop the next level of leaders and the next level of leadership within the organization. As you will see later, we have the opportunity to think about how we mitigate burnout. That is something that's been a challenge, is something that we see in our employee engagement survey. And of course, you start to add these types of numbers, these level of projects, and this is what we know about in the seven years. There's many things we don't know about and we're going to have to plan for and be adaptable in that space. We also have the opportunity to use this as a way to demonstrate how we can do effective change management, how we can be more flexible as our community needs change. And I think that original slide really tells a great story about how we're at where we're at and how we've gotten here today, what we need to get through the construction phase of transformation. But there's going to be an important conversation later about how do we serve the new five billion dollar investment that the community, you know, is having happen here. You just don't have that kind of investment happen and not create new service needs, whether that's people in parks to, you know, develop the public realm or serve the public realm, public safety and so on and so forth. So we need to think a little bit more adaptively and iteratively about flexible staffing models. And likewise, you know, great experiences create great leaders and we have the opportunity to use this recommendation and others as a mechanism for leadership development. I'd also just, you know, offer up that, you know, we have done a lot in the last five years as a community, a city, well, with both through effective elected official leadership and effective staff leadership. We've been flexible, adaptable, we have shifted our priorities to get where we're at today. We've stretched the rubber band, we've stretched it, but at some point the rubber band breaks and we need to really be mindful of that. Significant time under tension, eventually that is going to happen and the rubber band gets weaker and breaks. So we need to be mindful of that and just want to reflect a few of these important points and set the table demographically also. I think this is a big ask for you this evening, but we also want to ensure that there's strategies in place to shift and evolve and, you know, de-escalate if we need to as we move into the future. You know, we ramp up, we may need to ramp down, we may need to re-shift and refocus. Within the last four years though, about one-third of our workforce has changed. That's pretty unprecedented in local government. We are not a high turnover organization. And so just to see that recently, through a lot of retirement, a lot of new opportunity, we've had significant change. So even in two thousand twenty-two, we had a hundred and eight opportunities to rethink how we provide services because we had a hundred and eight people assume different roles or come into the organization differently. We'll continue to have that in the future and we, every time we have that opportunity, it's an opportunity for us to rethink and adapt how we're providing services. I'd also just say, I'm not reflected in the data up here, but we have had significant leadership transition with the city of Rochester. Again, also opportunities for us to rethink and reframe and refocus how we do work. My friend, Mr. Whitman back there is the most senior-serving department head in our group at about ten years. I'm the second at about six years. And so realistically, you know, after Mark and Dale left, you know, our years of service got a lot different with our leadership team. Doing great work also gives you the opportunity though to, you know, rethink how we do new things. But just want to note that we have those opportunities for succession planning, leadership development, super critical and important when you consider, you know, those types of transitions that we have been through and will be going through ultimately in the future. So again, we have to grow our own leaves, we can't recruit talent. And in order to do that though, we can recruit talent, but we have to be a place that people want to be. We have to create the kind of organization, the type of transformative organization that's going to support a transforming community. And I think that's an important thing, you know, to ultimately be mindful of as we move through this work together. A couple of data points from our engagement survey, just to really get you, get you thinking about some of this work. Maybe I skipped a slide here and missed this one, but just to put a little bit of a finer point, particularly in some of the areas that you're going to be considering. Public Works, thirty-four percent of their workforce in the next ten years is eligible for retirement. Community Development, thirty-nine percent of their workforce in the next ten years is eligible for retirement. Not as integral to the services today, but in the future, our public safety space, we have thirty-three percent of people eligible for retirement in ten years. Those bar graphs are kind of funny, the percentages are low, it's actually off the numbers, but you can understand the point there that we have the significant opportunity, you know, to rethink those positions as they come forward in the future and how we can best be flexible in that space. So again, we can reabsorb, refocus as we, as we move along to support transformation within the community. Now I want to switch and talk more about engagement. Engagement really can be the secret sauce. If we have a high level of engagement with our team, there's many things we can do and accomplish and there's many benefits. So I want to talk about the importance of that, how it's critical to developing a positive organizational culture and a successful organization. And it isn't really just a good thing to do, the right thing to do. It really is something that has a strong business imperative that does translate into results. I'll talk about that in the, in the moment. And we all have a role in creating a highly engaged organization. You as elected officials do, leadership does, supervisors do, on through the organization, we have that. So let's talk a little bit more about the benefits of a strong engagement. First and foremost, highly engaged organizations have fifty or double the odds of success compared with the bottom half. So just by being in the top half or being a highly engaged organization, you outperform on a number of metrics. I want to highlight a few of those. First and foremost, you have twenty-one percent more and higher levels of productivity. Now, that sounds kind of interesting, right? Twenty-one percent on the productivity side. However, if you think about our nine hundred and fifty people, if they're twenty-one percent more productive, that's like having a hundred and ninety more positions with the city. Now, do you have to invest in that to get that level of engagement and to happen? Yes, you do, but certainly not as much as it would take to generate or to, you know, secure another hundred and ninety people. So that alone sounds like a sleeper, but being a highly engaged organization really does that. And, you know, we're a service-based business, so being, you know, ten percent better on our customer metrics with a highly engaged organization, super important. Forty-eight percent less workplace safety incidents. We're self-insured from a work comp perspective, there's a bottom line issue with that in having a highly engaged organization. We would be what you'd consider a lower turnover organization and in a highly engaged environment, you have sixty-five percent less turnover. So just, you know, be mindful of that. It costs money to recruit, it costs money when you have to go through the knowledge transfer and transfer and you lose that institutional wisdom. And then lastly, again, a productivity item, but thirty-seven percent less absenteeism in a highly engaged environment. So definitely important, there's a strong business case for a highly engaged environment. I want to talk a few things in the burnout space, so just some things that are pulled out of our employee engagement survey. Two questions for you to really think about. One is, you know, am I achieving a good balance between my work life and personal life? You know, you can debate that whole thing and perspective and, you know, what balance is and all that and it means something different to others. But I would just say, on our last survey, which was about a year and a half ago, we were thirteen points lower than the government sector, which is a benchmark, fifteen points behind local government. And we went backwards from our previous survey, six spots. So you can see there's some consistent and persistent issues, you know, that are pushing people to feel that they have less of an opportunity for work-life balance. We want to fix that. Obviously, we have the finance, admin and community development departments being sort of your high negatives in this space. These are the kind of areas with the recommendation that we're trying to support. Moving on, just another question that can kind of give you a sense of how people are doing within the organization. Is my workload reasonable? Again, just overall, we're nine points behind both the government and local government and we went down a little bit from our previous survey. We clearly, you know, want to be going up in that space, but, you know, something for us to ultimately be mindful of. Want to just kind of close out, when you break down the data, we talk about, you know, being a data-driven organization. There are significant differences between non-supervisors and supervisors and even non-supervisors and department heads. So if you look at this data, am I workload is reasonable? If you're a ninety, if you're a non-supervisor, sixty-eight percent of people are saying, my workload is reasonable, that's positive. Thirty-eight percent of your department heads are saying that same thing, less people in, you know, in between on the supervisors. Even more of a, you know, spread when you start talking about non-exempt versus exempt. So people that are hourly employees versus people that are salaried employees, seventy-one percent of our folks are saying, you know, when I'm, when I'm an hourly employee, I'm achieving some form of work-life balance, which is our highest number. Your exempt folks are saying about fifty-six percent. So just note that there's a spread between those two items. So we have the opportunity to mitigate in that space. Now I want to just really transition and leave you with like two final slides. Things we are teaching as part of our Professional Development Academy, which is an element of our High Performance Organization. So things we're trying to teach emerging leaders in the organization and things we have the opportunity to do right in this process. So culture matters. We have a lot of things that talk about positive work climate, positive meaning and are connected to your work and providing value and, you know, viewing things as being worthwhile, positive communication, positive relationships. Lastly, on the bottom, I'm not going to go through all these, I just want you to get a flavor for some of the things we're supporting, but really trying to think about positive deviance and a lot of people that go through the program, this really resonates with them. You know, you hear a lot now about scarcity mindset and deficit thinking. This is of an abundance mindset and, you know, moving toward positive deviance. How can we be the best, you know, city of Rochester that we want to be? Change management is something we have a lot of opportunity to do better through this process, through many other things we do as a city. Folks within our HPO Academy learn about John Cotter's change management model, the Kula Ross change curve and other important change management items. Our current year or now second year HPO Academy team, the Kaizen Warriors are doing a change management toolkit for the organization to help equip the organization to do change management better. So with that, I'm going to transition over to Cindy and really appreciate the opportunity to learn more about how we can be a transformative organization, serving a transforming community.
Great, thank you, Erin. So excited also to be here, really appreciate the time and intentionality of the conversation last month. I felt the really great questions, it helped us really come back and reflect on the work that we've been doing over the past few months and almost year actually in trying to understand what you need from us in order to make, you know, the kind of decisions that you need to make in order to support this great work going forward. So you heard last month and again today, the landscape that's before us. The work that we've done to position Rochester for others to have the kind of confidence in this community, to invest in the community to the extent that they have. We've had some record years in terms of investments and obviously, as we now know, the next seven And obviously, as we now know, the next seven to 10 years are going to be absolutely unprecedented for any kind of community, let alone Rochester. Talk a lot about how we are also positioning our organization to be a high-performance organization. How you move from having 110 to 260% growth in your community and yet only growing your organization by 17%. That's a high-performance organization, just looking at the stats, but what can we do more around culture? So what's before you is how we want to propose, propose, we position our team and how do we level up and staff up to support this kind of growth, to support the succession planning that you saw on some of the earlier slides? And how do we do this in a way so that we move forward, not backward? So again, slide looks familiar. You saw it or we talked about it. I think you saw some of this last month. But really wanted to, you know, put another spotlight on what's before us in terms of construction projects through 2030. This is not your CIP. This is just specific projects that we know and have a general indication of when they're going to hit. So you'll see as you look through here that some projects can start to, we see the, a big red circle in '26. So '26 and '27 are really going to be significant years when we think about leveling up these projects and when they're going to hit. So for example, in '26, you'll see some that are going to start to taper off, some that are right smack dab in the middle, and some will just be coming on. So, and this is for the bigger development, private development and city projects that we know of. And we have a part two to this slide. And it's important to know that, again, there's a whole bunch of lines from the previous slide that we could run across the top to show you that '26 and '27 are going to be really peak years in terms of when this work is going to hit. I do want to talk a little bit about future projects. That is a placeholder. We generally believe some of those projects are going to hit in '27. Some might hit a little bit earlier, some might hit a little bit later. But those are projects that we know that we will likely have to do to support Unbound, other private development that we're aware of, as well as city projects that are needed. So that's the future projects that we know of. And so again, we want to think about how do we do this work in a way that it's done with us and we drive it as opposed to being done to us. Here's, it's also important to know that what you just saw were projects basically on the books, projects we know we have to do. There's also a list of projects that were previously identified and are on our radar. We know at some point over this time, we're likely to need to do a Heart of the City Phase Two, a Link BRT Phase Two, start to explore what does that look like? South Broadway reconstruction, work to Silver Lake. How do we re, how do we take advantage and repurpose the former parks maintenance site when that project is done? Third Avenue reconstruction needed to support additional development, transit, other transit facility needs. So again, these are efforts that we have previously identified. And we want to honor how these get prioritized through the budget process, and we have time to do that. We're not asking you to prioritize these projects today, but we know that you're, we're going to come to you likely through the budget process and talk about where should these lay alongside the other work that we're doing. And then, as every smart community does, you don't think this is our moment in time and this is all we think about for the next seven to 10 years. We know that there will be opportunities that we cannot yet imagine in this time period that position, and how do we need to position ourselves to those opportunities that will then start to land in 2030 and beyond? So while our eyes are very much on the present opportunities that we have and in the near term, also always being cognizant, that's what good communities do, that's what good policy direction is, that's what good planning is, is to think about what is the next after you work on this work. So last time we talked about, you saw these three boxes and it was really about how, what we need to do in the now, the near and in the future.
Can we back up a little bit here? I'm looking at this list and I know our key goal is to construct market rate owner-occupied homes. I don't see the urgency to do that. I don't see anything listed here for that. You know, and I'm, I'm getting worried about what we're trying to do. I've already written out, we've got the BRT coming, we've got the $30 million park and, or park facility. We've got North Broadway rebuilt. We have Third Avenue rebuilt. We have the Sixth Street Bridge. We've got North Broadway Park and Ride. We got Broadway and Highway 14 rebuilt. I don't know what we're doing at Chateau Theater. We've got Historic Soldiers Field Park work and we've got voter-approved park referendum. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's not on this list and I'm, I, I almost look at it like it's the movie Jaws, you know, I think we need a bigger boat and I, and I get that. But, you know, as, as parents, we all have had to balance time and money. I, I don't see all these projects because I'm looking here at, you know, the former Parks Maintenance Site facility. Well, when is that going to get done? I, you know, at the Mayo Clinic meeting we had last week, you know, in two years, you're going to have 2,000, for two years, you have 2,000 tradespeople working here. That's a lot of projects that's, that's going to suck all the labor, all the money, everything from Rochester. But I, I'd not seen the urgency for housing. I'd not seen, why would we want to be involved building something for those two or three years? That, that Mayo Clinic is building it because we're going to be competing for people and, and money and everything else. So I, I don't see everything here that I've just listed and I, and I'm worried that we're kind of just whistling by the graveyard.
You're right. Not everything here is listed. We, we did identify things in the last presentation. I would say that, for example, your, your greatest concern around housing, again, the local option sales tax was identified in the last presentation. Like we are also very much aware of that $50 million of economic vitality and how the work that we do with, with those funds to advance this council's priority around housing.
Well, what the city council last February 6, 7-0 said, we want incentives sent to us about how to do housing. And we're sitting here, a year later, and it's not done. And, and I, it's, the urgency doesn't seem to be there. And, and I'm going to keep ringing this bell saying, where is it? It's nowhere on this, on this list that you have anything about housing.
So Councilmember Palmer, if I could just respond that the local option sales tax was just approved in November of 2023. And so we didn't want to deliver an idea to you that didn't have a funding source that would position the community to perhaps have expectations for incentives and other programs that would not be achievable considering the alternatives to the sales tax were property tax-related expenses or incentives. And so we don't fully control the private market, which is what we'll primarily be delivering, whether it's multifamily or single family, whether that's rental, whether that's ownership. But we have brought forward as recently as two weeks ago, a strategy for the sales tax and how it would continue to move forward. And I believe it was two months ago with the comprehensive, maybe three months ago, amount of information about additional incentive programs that could come forward for those. So part of why those aren't listed here is because those are things that we know that we have to continue to do. And these are projects, not necessarily the ones right here, because those are for the future, but that the projects that we have secured funding for and that we need to deliver should not detract from all of the other priorities that the city council has established.
Well, I think when you have a key goal being, being construct market rate owner-occupied homes, that, that it should be your number one concern. And I'm looking here, I see Heart of the City Phase Two, a Link BRT Phase Two, South Broadway Reconstruction. I mean, we have huge projects coming. We have North Broadway Park and Ride. We have Broadway and Highway 14. It's in the, in the center of town that we're, that's not on here. Well, that's
These are, this is for 2030 and beyond. So what we're trying to show with this, and perhaps we didn't do that well for you, is that beyond the seven years of projects that we've already secured funding for, there's a point during those seven years where we need to start thinking about what is the city going to continue to consider as a high priority for physical investment after 2030? So our goal here today is not to say we should start planning on these things today. It's to say at some point during that seven years, we will have to restart a momentum phase where we're trying to build capacity by either achieving state funding, federal funding, or looking at other sources for these continued projects that would happen after the amount of investment that we have been able to secure that is going to be coming to fruition over the next seven years.
And we are talking about next week or in two weeks, our, at our study session, different types of incentives and supporting housing development, right? I don't disagree with you. I think obviously housing is an undercurrent for all of this development, whether it's led by us or the city. And I think we need to be really creative, as we've talked extensively about Councilmember Palmer. These are city-led projects. The city is not leading housing projects. I mean, we're trying to support and activate and spur the development, but why would the city be listing housing projects?
Well, it's our, it's our number one goal. I mean, if it's your goal to, to, to have, construct market rate and owner-occupied housing, that's our number one goal.
Right. But how does it compare to a, like, what would it look like to be listed on here?
But I'm in the community. I'm listening to people who say, well, we need to do something to the Chateau Theater. I'm listening to people, we need more swim pools. I'm listening to people who say, you know, Broadway and Highway 14 is a county project. And, and where are we at with that? We're, we're acting like we're just by ourselves and there's a huge amount of projects that are going to happen and it's not going to be cheap for us to be building in three or four years during this time. It's going to be expensive and, and I don't want us to get in this mess that we're paying extreme prices for items because somebody wants to do something. We need to plan this and plan it better.
I think we're agreeing that we do need to plan and that we can't do everything. We can do anything, but we can't do everything, which is the intent of this presentation, the prior presentation, the presentation about the sales tax, as well as needing to resource what we know is going to happen, but also understand that there could be other opportunities and we're going to need to be deliberative about that to understand whether we say yes to those or we say not yet.
Yep.
Mayor Norton. Thank you. And I, I understand Councilmember Palmer's frustration because we're all worried about housing. We're all worried about the growth and not having places for people to live. I think all of us are all aware of that. And I, and I just want to say to this slide and, and some of what you're talking about, we don't know the future. That's one of the reasons why I'm doing the visioning and starting that process so that when we're talking at 2030 and 2040 and 2050, we're allowing the community to vision with us and help us understand what they might want for this community. And that will come into play later on down the road. So I think we have the immediacy of the problems or the issues, the growth, and that's what we're talking about now. And I, but I appreciate this slide that says there's more to come. We don't know what it is. And we need to start preparing for that. At the same time, we're doing the hard work of today. So I thought I'd add that.
Thank you. So in, with that in mind, just thinking again about how do we step up for the now, the near and post? And that's what this slide was intended on. When we talked about that, what we, we now want to come back and share with you. Like right now, in terms of revenue sources, right now for existing staffing resources, it's primarily dependent on property tax. We do receive, of course, permit revenue and we receive other enterprise fund dollars. But primarily, the resources now are, are property tax. When we talk about enhanced funding levels, there is an opportunity to think about construction revenue and DMC funding to, to support, is enhanced staffing levels to help deliver on this work. And then it's, I also very important to remember that when this work happens in development services, it creates value. So as projects come onboard, they create value. Value in terms of additional net property, new property value, which then goes into your levy, which you determine how you want to use that to support other services. So there is a causal relationship here between supporting development in a way that we ultimately end up with new property value that also then helps support. And you decide on what those future staffing levels look. And as W Administrator Parrish indicated, you know, as we look, as people come online or as people retire or, or resign, there's an opportunity every time for us to bring a person on and evaluate, do we need it in this position or do we need it in this position? And I think we're all very much cognizant of what does that future state look like in terms of existing staffing levels? Once this work is done, a new property value is created. We, do you want to say we didn't just push the easy button from our team when we said, okay, what, what are we looking at? And what does it mean in terms of how we support this work? But before I go there, I want to talk a little bit about those revenue and expenses. So here's a, a chart that talks about anticipated construction revenue that we believe will be derived from this development. And as you can see, the, we anticipate that there is sufficient construction revenue to cover the projected staffing expenses that we are bringing forward for you to consider. It also gives us margin to look if our calculations need to be adjusted or if we hear from you and you say, we also want someone in this space to support this work. For example, if you say three inspectors isn't enough, we need four, right? There's margin here in the calculations to account for that. But I do want to be very clear, this is construction revenue and it can only be used for development-related services. This
Can't offset property?
It cannot be used to offset property tax. It cannot be used in some other way. It cannot be used to, just call it for music or library or name a department that's not working in the development services space. Now, we'll talk about the staffing model. There are people that we recommend, positions we're recommending that are in departments that will be, their specific role will be to work in this development space and therefore we can allocate the expense for that employee to this revenue.
Could I just, I'm, I'm still trying to absorb this, what you're talking about. Is this, is this permits and things or this isn't? This is the end built value or what are you, what are we?
Construction revenue predominantly, building permit revenue. It's, might also
Infrastructure, public infrastructure that gets built, RPU, public works. Is that, is that in here? I'm not sure what I'm looking at. I'm sorry.
On the revenue side?
The, the, the delta between the, what we've had projected and what it now is projected as.
So what's the revenue coming from and what are the categories of expenses?
New revenue coming from building permits, right-of-way applications needed for this development, for Unbound project, right?
You're specific, I apologize. I'm, I'm trying to get the, this sort of upper view of it. This is, this is Mayo or this is all the other projects?
This is Mayo. This is revenue from Unbound project. Yep. Building permit, construction, right-of-way.
So it is building permit, but it's also like a, a RPU, infrastructure, public works infrastructure? Or is that something totally different?
Some of those numbers are not yet in here because we haven't completely calculated them. We've, this is building permit revenue and some right-of-way revenue.
Okay, right-of-way.
And then the expenses include?
The expenses, do you want me to go to the, the expenses include only for the new positions that are being requested for this?
Okay. I, I think I have it a little better now. I just, I, I didn't have good background before you.
Sorry.
I think it's me. I'm not paying close enough attention. Sorry.
So it's not specifically related to the Unbound infrastructure required or anything? This is staffing? The $11 million
Expenses are staffing.
Expenses are staffing.
Okay, thank you.
So what does that model look like? So we are proposing that some positions come on in '24, midway through '24, and some positions come on, the remaining of the positions come on in '25. And so we're, and we're, we approach this holistically. You know, we sat down with the team and we said, okay, it's, it's basically double what your current volume is. And again, it was a really wonderful opportunity for the team. This is, I think, the beauty of the impact model. We didn't just say, okay, easy button, double the number of employees. We didn't even start there. We said, what do we need to do this work effectively while still continuing to deliver on the day-to-day services? And so what you see before you is a lot of input and dialogue from our development services team to understand how they really feel like they can deliver on this work while still providing the day-to-day support services that the community has come to expect. So what it does involve is re, restructuring the development services impact in a way that honors that day-to-day service, but also, a day-to-day service delivery can continue, but also positions us to deliver on the $6 billion of projects that we currently know of. And so, and I'll go a little bit deeper into my position, the Assistant City Administrator position and the Director of Construction. But what we're talking about in '24 is that my existing position gets redefined a little bit and more focused in this space, that there is the creation of an Assistant City Administrator over Development Services and Infrastructure, that we have a Director of Construction. And then in late '24, we bring on a Communications Specialist and a GIS Technician. And then in '25, bring on the remainder of the team, which would involve Assistant of the team, which would involve Assistant Construction Supervisors, a Building Plan Reviewer, three Building Inspectors, WMBE Compliance Project Manager, Senior Financial Analyst, an Admin Two's Position, and halftime of a Right-of-Way Specialist Position. When we talk about specifically what does Deputy City Administrator for Strategic Development and Assistant City Administrator positions look like, what this will allow me to do is to really focus on the work in this space, right? There's, geographically, we've got a lot of things happening in a smaller area and in a time compression, like Administrator Zalm said, seven years seems so far away, and yet it's going to be here in the blink of an eye, right? And so focusing on all the development-related, not only to Unbound, but our state and federal opportunities, managing the team, the coordination of those projects, watching policy, managing the partnerships, the action plan, monitoring and the related work to this, budget, et cetera. The Assistant City Administrator would then take over the Development Services Impact Team, which includes Public Works, Community Development, and a newly-formed Transit and Parking. As a reminder, when we went out for recruitment of the new Public Works Director, we pulled out Parking and Transit, made its own department with the pace of the transit projects that are happening, it warranted it. It will also give that Assistant City Administrator opportunity to work in that strategic priorities, implementation, and coordination space. And then bringing on a Director of Construction, and this is your high-level person, I don't want to call him out, but this is the, the equivalent of like a Dylan Dombrovsky, who is working alongside Dylan and managing that project management, construction and oversight with both city projects and private sector, someone, and, and as well as the state and federal projects, someone watching as we triage, okay, at our pinch point, we're going to have this street closed and this street closed and this street closed, and this project needs to take precast delivery, and this project needs to get sewer infrastructure in. How does the secret sauce of making all of that work? And someone who is really knowledgeable in that construction management space, looking at that constantly, right? That that is their job, is we think about disruption and what's going to happen in, again, this very compacted space, and how do we try to minimize that disruption to as many people as possible? And again, I mentioned it earlier, I think it's really important to remember that this work creates value, right? It translates to, ultimately to increase property tax revenue, which can support, what does the new norm look like in 2030? What's the level of service delivery across this city organization and across this community? What does that look like? And I shared this slide because it's important to understand, and from, this is five years of DMC, and if you can see, the purple lines show property tax valuation in 2015 and how it has grown in the five years in terms of positive impact to supporting this work. And so, again, it's, is how do we, how do we seize this moment? How do we have this done with us as opposed to to us? And then thinking about, as there are future dollars coming in on the levy side, how do you, as elected officials, distribute those dollars to provide the level of service that's going to be required in 2030?
Mayor Norton. The magic touch, yeah. Could you go back to the slide right before this? One more. Thank you. So as we're looking at this, for new positions for '24 and '25, and it's, you know, it's a significant number here, how can you explain to me how Mayo Clinic's bold-forward-unbound timeline allows us to, to front-load this many staff? I assumed that money might come over, you know, a lot of time, and yet we're hiring in two years, so can you, I was just thinking about it, can you help me explain?
Sure. Yeah, it's a great question. So we already have a list from Mayo of about, I believe it's 12 projects that are already, they identified that are starting in '24. So this work is already, right? And the, the, their peak years are going to hit between '26 and '27, and we're still trying to understand what that means in terms of peak years. But I will just give you an example, Kellin Building, let me just, some stats, right? Well, the parking ramp, for example, and we know there's a couple parking ramps with this project, parking ramps, and I'm going to be very specific about like building inspectors, right? 333 inspections for parking ramp six, right, block six parking ramp. Kellin Building has over 300 inspections to date, and we consider it 25% complete. So in terms of the work that's going to be rolling on, we already, we already know that '25 is going to be a big year for us. So some of these people bringing on in '24 is to create the structure and the systems in place so we can bring on the rest of the team in '25. And again, remember, this is so that teammates that are working on other things, like the CIP, like the sanitary sewer investments that need to be, like the road constructions that are ongoing, and the trails and et cetera, that we're not in, we're not pulling from teammates that need to work on those things in order to work in this space.
Yeah, and, and I think that's somewhat helpful. I guess I'm just, I'm hoping your plan here, while you've laid it out, is flexible enough that if things go slower, we don't commit ourselves a year in advance, right? That we don't purchase people who won't be needed till later, that we time this so that the growth and the need is fluid.
And Mayor, if I may, that's part of the intent, and I think the key here is that with the known revenue sources, we can, from a accounting perspective, make sure that we are putting the coding together that's necessary to assure that we're meeting the requirements of construction-related revenue, but that we're also doing so in a way where we can track it and we understand that if we need flexibility, I mean, we're going to receive a significant amount of this before the end of construction is, is done, right? So some of that is, i- in later years, we will have saved up in order to continue delivering on those inspections.
Yeah, that's great. I'm just, was just kind of hoping that there was just this little bit of fungibility in there so that we can meet our need with the, the needs of what, what we're facing.
Yeah, I think that's, and, and we'll, we'll know through '24 as stuff comes online, it's like, you know, we could probably hold off on the Building Plan Reviewer until Q4, '25. Like, we are absolutely prepared for that, to have that discussion internally and, and have built in that kind of flexibility. The numbers that you see are, we'd say, like, worst-case scenario in terms of they came on Q1 of '25.
There's a point in this where we may need to be thinking about more in the middle, so, but we don't want to assume something, we want to be able to have the structure in place so that we can be adaptable but focused, which sounds like juxtaposition because it is. So we need to be able to be flexible and focused, and I think what we were trying to do is create like a baseline for where we think we're going to need to be, recognizing that if we need to staff up, and some of that could be contract, there's a lot of different ways that we can think about this, and there are different ways that even partners like RPU are thinking about how did they best deliver projects that are going to require utility work in their space in a way that maybe is different than what they've done before, so that we're not getting in each other's way.
Uh, so just so I'm clear on the assumptions that have gone into this, so that, this is anticipating bold-forward-unbound, our own city projects, private development or DMC projects, what are, just give me a little bit more of how you got to this-
Sure. Staffing levels primarily for bold-forward-unbound and the city projects that we received state and federal funding for. So for example, six, you know, we have project management manager leading Sixth Street, Complete Street Bridge, et cetera, but, but a coordination with that work as well, right? So it is around state and federal projects in the downtown area or proximity to the downtown area that are likely to be impacted by our six-year CIP or bold-forward-unbound, if that makes sense.
So something tapping back into Councilmember Palmer's comments about housing, which we also know needs to be growing along this path too, so does, does it consider the amount of housing increase we're needing in this community and what impact that has on our staff?
Uh, I would, I would say, and Irene Woodward, our Community Development Director, is here.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing that is to emphasize here, if you go back to the previous slide, I mean, one, we would be 50% wrong if we, you know, don't hit the projection here, so I mean, we've got a lot of, you know, flexibility, but I, I'd also say, just emphasizing, if you look at the way Cindy has broken out the DSI Impact Team model, this new Assistant Administrator is designed to deliver on your existing strategic priorities, of which housing development is one of those.
Okay.
And of course, they work together, right? But I think what you're trying to have accomplished here with freeing up time for Cindy to focus on the bold-forward-unbound work, the integrated downtown development work, is really giving you the bandwidth to have someone else that can focus on these strategic priorities that is actually going to have capacity to do the work.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I would just add to that, you have in the budget process done some, made some investments already in this current year, like there's, you unfroze a Building Inspector position, you have, one of Terrance's teammates will be going from part-time to full-time, so you have, you have considered some of that already in your budget process, so.
Good, okay. Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to, uh, Slide 32. We can't spend the peach on anything but development.
The peach, development services.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, there's a gap of about $10 million, and 11.5 is devoted to staffing growth. What does the other 10 million go toward or, and if somehow current staffing could accommodate all that we need to do, what would the 21 million be spent for in terms of development?
Yeah, sure.
But, I mean, again, this is a very fluid projection, right? I mean, we think we've got a good conservative projection here, we'll monitor how that comes in. However, there are things we could do with the differential that would be helpful to you. For example, we have, our construction-focused team had a recently built facility that we issued debt for. If we have incremental value here and are able to deliver the projects and receive this construction revenue, we could consider that in the future. I mean, we have to see how it plays out. I mean, you're talking about like a reconciliation in the '28, '29, '20, '30 timeframe, but there is opportunity to rethink how you use this differential, assuming that City Administrator Zalm says you don't have additional staffing or contracted services or other peaking kinds of items you're trying to solve for. There are some good opportunities to buy down your footprint for your other obligation, financial obligations that you have.
I would just also point out, you don't receive this revenue unless we meet all of our requirements to deliver on the permitting. So we are a key critical point in our ability to deliver on these in the timeframe that's expected is part of how this revenue comes in. So if we don't ha, let's just say we tried to do it with the same number of people, you wouldn't see any of this revenue, and you also wouldn't see the new tax capacity, you also might see Mayo go away. So, I mean, it's sort of this symbiotic relationship that, I know that there was the comment made before that we trust that Mayo can deliver this project, and we absolutely have to help them deliver the project because they cannot build here without meeting all of the building requirements that are necessary in order to continue to get permitted and move forward, and that's in all kinds of spaces that we don't always think about in, they do happen in residential construction, but when you think about a single-family home, it's getting built site by site, it's a really different cadence than trying to deliver a phased project that's $5 billion over the course of seven years that has tear-down, rebuild, reconstruction, utilities, private utilities, and all of those different impacts to the public infrastructure and other construction projects that we will need to continue to move forward with on our regular CIP, sometimes in the same spaces. So there's the likelihood that we would not need to have more staff to deliver on the permitting timeframe and this amount of influx of dollars that's required in order to deliver the outputs of the projects for us to get through the permitting for the private sector is slim to none.
Yeah, that, we could not deliver this without additional staff. I, I mean, that's just, or you would have to seriously look at what doesn't happen in order to deliver on this and receive this permit revenue. And, and not only do we have all this work to deliver on, a few slides back, when you saw retirements, that's further compression, 70 out of 196 teammates in Public Works and Community Development, where a lot of this work lives, are eligible to retire, further adding pressures to delivering on these kinds of initiatives.
Do you want to just say what's underneath your question, Councilmember Wall? Are you looking at whether some funds could be applied elsewhere? Is that what you're, what you're driving at?
Yes, I, I was, am suggesting that all of these dollars are going to be spent, and it appeared to me that there was a $10 million difference. Where would that money be spent logically within the city development if we're not going to spend it, you know, in, to relieve pressures in other parts of the levy?
Okay. Councilmember Dennis?
Hey, thank you, and I, again, apologize for my, my scratchy voice here. So part of, one of the roles of city council, a lot of roles, but one of the roles is oversight to, to make sure that we are good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And when, looking at this, and I see the different sources and of revenue, but is there going to be any impact on future levy with all these high-paying jobs that are coming in? And, for example, also, the city council, we're all kicked out of our offices at City Hall because there wasn't enough room at City Hall, so they took all of us and, and moved us out for other people. There's not a lot of room for people to work, so is this going to cause the city to have to build more facilities to, to accommodate staffing? So with perhaps building more facilities, increased, you know, high wages, is that going to have any impact on 2025, '26 onward with the tax levy?
Uh, no, so this is all paid, these positions during this period of time are all paid through construction revenue. The exercise that we did with the team, and why you see the positions that you see here are because we know that there will be retirements in these spaces, and all of these positions can be reabsorbed into the organization, whether through attrition or retirement. And so you're carrying those costs right now in your levy, but right, for, for the duration of this project over the seven years, it's paid through construction revenue, and then anticipated that these positions are reabsorbed. And then to your question about building new facilities, these positions are going to live in their respective departments. You, as a council, invested in Development Services and Infrastructure Center, anticipating growth, there is, there is plenty of space to accommodate a majority of these positions, but for example, the, the finance person should live with the finance team, and the Assistant City Administrator would be down in admin, but many of them will be located out at Development Services and Infrastructure.
And I would just say also, to your point, when we reallocated space to the city council on the third floor from the second floor, there is still space available, and as was intended, that was always intended to be drop-in space. So some of our employees have more drop-in space, and some of our employees have an office, and, and some of our employees have cubicle space, and many of these employees will primarily be out in the field doing inspections and things of that nature. And so those are things that we're always planning for year to year and trying to be flexible and, and allocating resources appropriately to the time where they're needed.
And then my other, one more question, is back on the chart, when Mr. Parrish was showing the organizational health culture matters, I, I do agree, I think it's very important to have a positive and compassionate work environment. Well, I recall the survey back in February of last year, that was not recorded, so if anyone wants to see that, the city did not record that meeting, but that was a very low, like you were mentioning, the numbers were very low, and, and, well, I know how, from my personal experience about some of the lack of compassion, what are you doing to make sure that those numbers, that the staff isn't treated like maybe how other council members were treated, how, how are staff going to be kept, the retaining policy to make sure that, that there is a positive climate, and that when we invest huge amounts of time and resources into training staff, that they just love it and want to stay here and really invest themselves in a, in a company that- in a, in a company that they don't feel are, is going to target or create any fear of, of them speaking up. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a variety of things. Engagement is a team sport, right? We all have a role in creating the right environment for people. As elected leaders, what you say and do, people watch that and they want to hear about that. They want to feel that their time is valued and not wasteful. And so I think that's important, you know, ultimately to bear in mind. We all have a role. We all know that the relationship with the supervisor is very important, you know, and so we try to train and develop supervisors. We try to provide leadership development opportunities, shorter and long-term development experiences for people. So there's not like one answer to that. It's a lot of little decisions that happen over the course of time and in a year and that are cumulative. And great experiences for people generate other great experiences because, you know, if I'm having a great experience working for the City of Rochester like I am, you know, other people, you know, that translates. But we need to have our leaders in a great position in order to, you know, be, you know, have time to lead. And, you know, these are the kinds of conversations, you know, today, that policy that you make that hopefully help that.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. Kind of jumping off what Mr. Wall said a little bit, I was looking at slide 32, big 30, oh, that one. The big number 32. So perhaps my math is a little off and I'm not understanding if this inflow of funding from construction revenue will be exponential greater at the end than it is at the beginning, but I'm seeing this as sort of, you know, 3.1 million revenue roughly every year, if you break it down evenly. And these hires from 24 to 25 being about 1.2 million. So I'm seeing a surplus of just under 2 million. Where, where is that surplus going to go? What, what will that be devoted to? Or are we figuring this calculation a little bit differently? I appreciate the fact that I, I can't imagine what the project management Gantt chart looks like for this, first of all, but it's going to end up being iterative at times. It's going to be organic at times when you have so many components to a project like this one will have. But what do you foresee doing with that surplus of revenue that's coming in with those peaks from construction revenue and then those valleys that we won't need to hire anybody else for a couple of years until perhaps there's a retirement?
Sure. And I think, so as we indicated, we will, in some years, it might be that it, it carries over because we anticipate that we may have a need there and we have to add to fill that need, right? So it's monitoring it pretty regularly to say what needs to be carried over. Or do you, as an elected body, as Deputy Administrator Parrish indicated, do you want to put those dollars towards other development service-related costs like buying down the debt for the Development Services and Infrastructure Center that you bonded for a number of years ago? So I think it's a, we monitor and we talk internally, project out what we think we're going to need, how we're performing in terms of, are we getting the work done? Do we need to add people? No, we're good. Okay. So then where, what are we going to forecast out? Do we need two years from now, three years from now? We're going to probably need X. It leaves this amount of surplus. How do we want to allocate that surplus? I think that is an iterative conversation that we would have with administrators' homes and and to bring a recommendation forward to you. It's going to, it's going to be a regular conversation over the next seven to 10 years, quite honestly.
But those funds could be carried over year to year? There isn't a timeframe they have to be used within, I guess, maybe you're getting at?
They need to be used within the timeframe of delivering the projects, but I think the key is there could be a really peak time during this where there's more than the three building permanent inspectors. There could be a key point here where there's more than the construction right-of-way inspectors that are shown. There could be a key point here where we need to have additional contractual relationships in order to deliver on unprecedented number of like plumbing inspections or where we need to do significant amount of construction coordination because we are at pinch points of projects where they have to continue to move forward and they can't all happen at the same time. So I, I don't think that this is the only time you're going to have this conversation. But the orange construction revenue, which is additional beyond what had been projected in your six-year projection, has to be spent on legally allowable expenses. So it needs to be related to development services and delivering on those permits. And I also, we don't know if it will end up being the $21 million. It could be less. If, if it can be done more efficiently, it's not as if we wouldn't do that. But we're trying to have the best lens that we can so that it's not a surprise when we're bringing something forward. The other thing that's still going to happen during all of this period is you're going to do your two-year budgets. You're going to have your supplemental budget. We're going to continue to be a city. We're hopefully going to get more and more successful with the implementation of 311 so that, you know, we are still implementing these projects that are able to reduce the burden on our existing employee base so that, for example, people aren't receiving the phone call and the concern and trimming the tree. So, I mean, we are continuing to look at those iterative improvements. There could be significant value that we see, for example, in 311. Maybe there's a significant number of those calls that are going to start coming into there and that's a key component of this, that you end up needing to step up. That's not on this, on this project chart, but that we learn in year three or middle of year two that we need to be prepared for because we think that will be a game changer in being able to keep things moving forward specifically related to the development services.
Thank you. Councilmember Keen.
Thanks. So I have a couple of questions and I just want to make statements, but I want to make sure I understood because I was confused with the, the permitting revenues and that, that that's, you know, we've got a raft of projects coming in with sports fields and bonding projects, but I think you were really focusing on the bold forward when you talked about the, the permitting and that. It's not, because I mean, some of those other things, they're, they're going to take city staff, but it's a different way you're, you're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay.
This is only Bolt Forward Unbound.
Okay. So it'd be a follow-on question. I think this might be Deputy Administrator Parrish, but when we do work now, like Mr. Bolt has recently been assigned and he's going to be working on the sports thing and that's coming out of lost or local option sales tax. Would his work over the next couple of years be paid for out of the bonding or does that still go to, I assume it's going off levy right now?
Yeah, I mean, there's a variety of situations, but generally speaking, you know, like in the case of Cindy and I right now, we're both paid for out of the general fund.
Yep.
This model would have Cindy's position being paid for out of construction revenue because it's specifically supporting that, you know, we are not paid for otherwise. But we, many people are paid for with different salary allocations. You'll see a proposal next week, like we talked about in the sales tax that would have our manager of facilities and property who is, you know, intending to retire paid for out of the project cost. We have a lot of public works folks that allocate to project costs, but generally, like in the case of Ben Bolt, being specific, like he'll continue to be paid out of, you know, park and rec proceeds for now. We can always reconsider that and evaluate that on projects, but at this moment, his particular case, he continues to be paid for out of the park and rec.
I ask, could you keep an eye on that? Because when we're like dedicating staff towards these projects, I would like to see those, like those sales tax projects that help cover those expenses and I, someone might disagree with me that, that that should be just on us, but consider the sources and uses of, and of how, how we go forward with that money. We will. So here's my kind of take on this. You know, I think we're requested up here to give feedback on this plan and I, I mean, I don't know any other way. I don't think, I think you heard about oversight, but it feels irresponsible if we're going to say, yeah, let's, let's take a look at the things that are coming up in the next seven years and just figure out a way to do them. That, that feels really irresponsible. So I think there, if there were another way and you were coming in here with a construction, hiring another company or something, but I think this is the professionals coming to us and saying, this is the way to do it. So, so I want to be supportive of that. I don't sit up here with the idea of like, no, you need three of those and two of those. I don't know what you need. And my take is, most of the numbers we're seeing today are hard estimates. We just don't know what's going to happen and we're, and we're going to put some hard numbers here and then react to what's really happening because anytime you're talking about more than a year into the future, I, I, I won't trust those exact numbers, but I think the concepts here are, are sound and and going back to that sources and uses, I mean, I, I want us to keep good accounting on that stuff that, that if this is driven by the Mayo project and that's going on, I appreciate that it's got to be in Development Services. But I don't want these things falling to the unclear, therefore it goes into the general fund and therefore it goes to the levy. That's what, that's the danger of taking on all these projects to me. I want to still feel confident that we're not loading some of this development onto the residents of Rochester. I, I think the council needs to assess the work, but also understand how it'll be paid. And I'm trying to make that point that we have, I, I don't have any illusion that when we hire someone in 2024, they won't be doing a slightly different job in 2028 or 29 and other things will change. We're not going to be able to keep track of that. I watched our DMC employees merge into our organization and become other things. I, I think that's normal, but I, I, I want to make the, the assertion that I want the staff to be well aware of the, of the, what's driving the work and who's paying for that work. Because I, I want to feel confident that I can turn to the community and say, we're doing this right. Yeah, that, that's it.
Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, excuse me. Thank you. On slide 37, can we go back to that, please? Yep. So this is, it's a question really more of an allusion to what you had said about retirements, you know, of the quote-unquote worker bees. I, I agree with Councilmember Keen. The need for this, the responsibility we have to make sure that these projects get done. I, I'm just a little curious, one layer down. You know, the administration is great. We need all this in order to coordinate and, you know, have it administer. What about the next layer down in terms of the vast amount of work that the worker bees are going to be doing? Do we, do we feel like we have enough of a foundation there that a director can say, you guys are going to go do this? And then that manager is going to say, okay, you 10 people, go make it happen, right? Like in software, right? Mayo says, go build some AI models and it winds up on my desk eventually, right? So from that perspective, I, I'm just curious to get your point of view on that.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. And I would, I would focus on this gold box or whatever color you want to call it. Before, you know, about a week before this item was loaded up into the studies, into the, into the study session document, technology. One more chance with the team. I mean, this is a weekly conversation at our Development Services and Impact Team. And you said, one more ask, right? Do we think with the information that we have, three building inspectors on point? Yes. Two assistant construction supervisors on point? Yes. Like when we think about this work and we think about service delivery for our other stuff, the local option sales tax, the, the other day-to-day services that we provide, like team, is this, we feeling good about the recommendation with the information we have? And the answer was yes. So, but, and that's a but, I do think as more information comes, as we get through 24, we start to get into 25 and into 26, we're, we could come forward and say, yeah, you know, we missed it. It's clear we need this, right? I will tell you, as a comparison, and I, I remember very vividly in 22, our soon-to-be Public Works Director Tyler Niemeyer said, we'll be able to breathe in 23, but 24 is going to come hard. And guess what? He's right. We're in 24 and, and that was before this announcement. I mean, I remember the team like, do what we can to catch up and prepare for 24 because there's going to be a lot to do in 24. So I have to trust the team. They're, they're brilliant. Like the, we're a young team in terms of years of service to this organization, but the depth of knowledge and the critical thinking that happens, I mean, there were three or four iterations of this and, and the conversation, like I said, just about a week before this was getting published to say, are we, are we on point here with the ask?
I'm hearing a few things from all of my colleagues. I just want to make sure you're hearing some similar things. It seems like there's less concern exactly what the positions are, other than they're the right time, the right fit with both our income coming in and what the actual project needs are, that we have a regular assessment going on of what those needs are and whether they're the right position as we iterate and that we have appropriate accounting and are just making sure all our ducks are in row. But big picture, all of those things are so that we can deliver our projects and so that there's a high quality of buy-in and engagement in our organization and people aren't feeling underwater like we were starting the presentation with. Are those sort of the main things you're hearing?
Yes. Yeah. And I, I want to say that we very much feel that there's a performance reporting piece to this work, right? And that's also why you see some of the recommendations that we do, like how are we, what do we say we're going to do? How do we, how well do we do it? How do we need to adjust accordingly? And how do we come back and share that out with you and the community?
Yes. All right. Councilmember Palmer.
I got a couple of things. One of them is, is, you know, I agree with Mr. Keen on, on, you know, we need a bigger boat. I understand that. I know that we need that. But I also want to warn us that if, I believe that we fill out a form every year, report on what our building perimeter revenue is and expenses are. There are people who watch those and they will sue us if we don't take everybody accounting just perfectly. So we, we try to slough some stuff off, we're going to end up being sued. And, and I don't want to have that happen. So I want to be honest with how we're doing it. So if your time is a tenth of the time on this, that's great. If it's a third of the time, I understand that. But, but I do want to forewarn us that, that we will be sued if we do not do this correctly. The other example I'll give you is every year you get a huge project in building permit fees. You get this huge amount of money. Everybody's happy. And the next year, now you, you have all the expenses. So it has to go up and flow and, and, and work its way through. So that's just the, the nature of accounting on this. And, and I think people need to realize that if you see, oh geez, we had a, you know, $10 million project last year, you have nothing this year. Well, it doesn't mean everybody's staying around. And I think that's important for people to do, but I just want to make sure we're clear on that reporting, that we're doing it correctly, fairly.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. It's an exercise that we do with the Finance Department every year. So appreciate the reminder and the, the severity of which that report and what it drives is, is not lost on us. And I would also say the ebbs and flows absolutely right. I think as I reported at the last presentation, four of our highest years have been in the last five years. So there's a pattern there of investment that's happening.
It's also a part of why it's critical that we have that accounting position and why we have that administrative position. Because each of those key things are important to be able to track and deliver as we go forward and to say, hey, we're not hitting our two-week turnaround or one-week turnaround. Like, we got to get ahead of this. We have to figure out what's going on and we need to make sure that we're accounting for all of these things properly. Or there may be points in time where we do need to reprioritize something else that we're working on in order to push through a three-month period. And those are things that we have to do all the time now. We just don't have, we're not doing them at the magnitude at which we will for the next seven years.
Yeah. So Mayor Norton had a final comment?
In addition to the comments of my colleagues, and I, I think they're giving you good advice and, and wise counsel. I'm going to disagree, I think, a tiny bit with Councilmember Keen here on this issue of watching the number of people we hire through the process and making sure that our attrition and at the other end is working out. And I say this, I know that's what she'll do. I heard the cautioning from Councilmember Palmer and others about this. But I had a little bit of anxiety and at our last meeting, well, we talked about using local option sales tax to pay for a department and the staff there. I, I, I felt anxiety because what if? What if that had not passed and we had, we had to suddenly raise our levy in order to pay for staffing and services that I didn't know we had been paying? That was just a real kind of a gut check for me. And so I'm not comfortable using short-term funding for positions we know that are going to be here for the long term. I personally think we're going to be seeing enough growth in this community after Bolt Forward Unbound that we're going to need these staff moving ahead and that we will have people moving here and economies that will support it. That's my fingers crossed. But I guess in addition to Councilmember Palmer's comments, I would say, let's watch very carefully that we don't get ourselves in a place at the end of the day where suddenly we're having to go back on the levy for a bunch of, you know, very talented staff we've hired that maybe we don't have the need for. Again, I don't know that that's going to happen, but I would just add that caution.
I think, I totally appreciate your, whenever you had your anxiety point. I think that that is a critical point of this is this one-time transformational set of projects plus significant private investment over the same seven years. And we still have our two-year budget process. We still have our forecasting process. We still have those things. And I think it actually provides And I think it actually provides a really unique opportunity for the leadership team. And I'll use the word practice to practice together, really thinking deliberately about the future, our resourcing. How do we collectively look at the budget to say, this is where our next people investment is, is here because of. Where we are on this timeframe of where we're starting to see impacts to services. You saw a lot of support this year for public works. They, they have been. Trying to get their, in the field work done without a lot of supervisory support for 15 years. And so at some point. The camel's back will break and we need to make sure that we're resourcing that, but doing that over, looking forward over time. So it doesn't come to us immediately. It's something that we're planning for, not just coming forward to the elected body. But that we're doing that work together inside the organization in a way where people don't think that this is the year where there's a $20 million increase. There's never going to be that year. There's going to be opportunities iteratively over time for us to properly resource things as the, as the. The stressor on the service area gets more. So I, I think. Both of those things are going to have to be on our minds as we move forward through the next, you know, supplementary budget, two-year budget. You know, these aren't the only times that we'll be looking at this. And if something does need to come over into the budget, we'll just need to be very deliberate to say. We're over hiring something potentially because this is the ongoing resource coming to you from the tax levy, which can't go beyond what you said every December. And that this other thing still needs to keep happening on the construction services side for delivering development services paid for by that construction revenue. Um, I do think you're also going to have opportunities and needs during that. Set of time to over hire things because you know, someone is leaving. And you might need to have four of something because something's leaving in three to six months. Because they're retiring or, or something of that nature. So. I think this does leave you the flexibility to do that, but in those times, you're going to be paying double for a period of time, but that's so that you can keep moving smoothly. With momentum. We do this not uncommonly in police and fire because. Of how they have to hire. Sometimes we need to over hire, knowing that there's a retirement coming in two to three months, but we won't have another class for six months. So these are not, not foreign concepts to us, but it's just for different reasons for this type of project work.
All right. Councilmember Dennis?
Hey, thank you. Um, I do agree with Mayor Nern. I think that once, well, I mean, that maybe this wasn't her exact wording, but. Once we hire staff, um, you know, the people I've talked to, the employees here in the city who have. Who have reached out and come to me and said that they're concerned about the, um, more and more administration level staff. Like they're having to go through so many more. Um, and once you hire these positions, I believe. I believe it's going to be hard to, um, let them go if, you know, after seven years or whatnot. And what my allegiance is to is, um, not just to Ward Six, but those who are really struggling. Very much struggling to make ends meet paycheck to paycheck throughout the city. There's people who not just, we need more housing. But they need to be able to stay in their housing. And when you have, I am, I'm imagining that the bold forward unbound project will also bring in. Very good paying jobs, which is wonderful. But then you have the school teachers and I, I use my lived experience making full-time 16,000. As a special education para. You have, you have to have those special education pairs. You have to have the people who are going to educate and be part of this, um, growing community. And if you're making 16,000 full-time and you have, uh, five billion coming in, you're going to have, um, to compete housing-wise. So I don't know what kind of incentives or what kind of, um, I don't know, rent cap or what we can do. As a city to make sure that people do not lose their homes, that they are very struggling just to stay in right now. And so I know I mentioned this last month, um, but can you elaborate a little bit more on how to ensure that people. Right now, who are paycheck to paycheck, one step away from being homeless themselves. Will be able to stay in their homes when we have all these new high-paying jobs coming in, fighting for property.
So, uh, next study session, February 26th is when you're going to hear about, um, economic incentives and. Um, some options that you might take, uh, might consider in terms of. Now that is specifically around creating housing inventory. If you as elected body want to direct us to look into, um. I think your suggestion was rent caps or other ideas like that. I think that would have to be done through a CIA. Um, I do want to say on the chart, we're, one position is admin related. The other, all the other positions are very specific in the field. Positions to deliver on this work.
Okay. Um, and I think that is something I would be very interested in looking at a rent cap. So I will look into CIA on that. But what my one, um, other issue or question, I guess, is to go back to the staff. Um, when you look at the organizational health in, in teammate engagement, and I, and I think engagement is so wonderful, but is not done. To the level that I think in our, in our city and in our, in our, in, in our, um, community that we need. How, um, transparency is trust and we, I believe there are. A lot of meetings being done behind closed doors. How is it going forward to make sure that teammates? Have the ability to truly be engaged and speak up and, and be part of this, you know, um, if there is. They have a critical, like they see something wrong. I, I got an email today that, um, asking for an audit is frowned upon. What do you, what do you see? Um, or how can teammates really be more. Engaged and have a true say in the new, um, growth of our city?
Yeah, I think there's a variety of things, you know, in that space. I mean, certainly. Uh, we have a lot of different accountability mechanisms, the very basic things that you all are familiar with in terms of reporting your. You know, conflicts and, you know, of interests and so on for certain types of positions. Uh, the council through your action planning proactively identifies areas that you want to have evaluated as part of our. Overall evaluation agenda. This is something that we develop capacity. Um, we participated in the data alliance. And so right now we're doing a fleet evaluation. That's just something we think we can do better. So there's a couple of things that we talk about. Is it just something we can do better or is there a concern? Um, we have a number of different policies within the HR framework. Um, if there's challenges with the respectful workplace, if there's, you know, some concern, you know, with. Uh, you know, any number of different things, you know, there's different reporting mechanisms identified, um, within that. And so. I think we have a lot of different things depending on the very unique fact set. Um, and that's really important to note, like all these things have very unique fact sets, different paths. Um, and I think we have a lot of great mechanisms internally, um, if there are concerns, if this concerns with your supervisor, if the concerns with. You know, name it, uh, there's a lot of different ways to walk through that.
And I just think it's also important to point out that we actually don't see those. We actually do have fairly high engagement. We had an 81% response rate to our engagement survey, which is. An unprecedented amount of engagement and response. And so, um, I would just point out that while that may have come off as if there's. A problem within the organization, we do attract exceptional talent. We keep exceptional talent, but. There are people who for a variety of reasons, like they don't plan to work until they're 80, um, retire from organizations, um, despite really having. A great experience somewhere. So, um, I just want to make it clear that we actually did have really positive. Results. It's just that a little bit of a distribution across the organization as we see where some of the pressure points are. Um, what we're here today to talk about is relieving those pressure points, some of which are specifically resources. Um, but also just making sure that we don't spend our time on things that are wasteful and repetitive.
Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. I think one of the brilliant parts of this, uh, plan is. Forethought, going to the sun setting of the plan and being able to, uh, absorb the people into our, a right-sized government. Through natural attrition. Well, I just think that's, that's a really bright way to look at. Trying to figure out what our current need is and what will a need be in 2030 or beyond. And, uh, still keep great people. Uh, it was Jim Collins who once wrote, uh, we need to get the right people on the bus. And if we can get the right people on the bus, uh, in every area of, of, uh, city government. Uh, I think that we are, uh, well situated. I'm with the mayor, uh, and talked with administrator Zolms last week, uh, that, uh, we, I think we. Absolutely have to make this levy neutral in costs so that, uh, we as a city. Simply find this to be a great benefit to our city.
I think you just have one more slide and then we're. Do you wrap up or?
A couple more slides. Uh. So yeah, so, um, in addition to having the right teammates and the teammates, having the right approach to your work, right? And so. On the left-hand side, you see how we currently deliver solutions and how we're innovating in terms of how we approach our work. And to a certain extent, it's created. Um, this, this higher service level delivery that we expect to carry out, um, into, uh, the work over the next seven to 10 years. And what is the impact of doing that kind of innovation? And for us, it's really, it is about delivering on commitments. And so. Staffing up appropriately, bringing on the kind of talent that has an innovation mindset, has a high-performance organization mindset. Clearly laying out what are those performance measures and constantly going back and checking and say, what do we say we're going to do? How are we going to deliver on it? And, uh, it's, it goes without saying that we cannot do this work on, we're, we're not an island. We cannot do this work alone. Is about collaboration and partnership. So this is the mindset from which this team operates. Um, across the city Rochester organization, but in particular the development services team, it's how they've been able to deliver. Um, and as I said, four of, uh, our highest years have been in the last five years. Um, we've talked about this model, uh, proposed model a number of times. And so I think at this point I'll flip it back over to administrators.
Yeah, this wasn't in your packet because it was something that we were sort of inspired by, um, having some conversations last week and actually I think probably it. Applies even more after your responses today. Um, but it, you know, I think we are really energized as a, as a staff overall. We had our anxiety moments. We will have more anxiety moments in the next seven to 10 years, but. Um, we're really energized to meet the moment, to do our part, support our partners at DMC, have their support. Um, in this with a number of different things that you've looked at, making sure that. The private investment that's kind of being doubled down on here helps support that collaborative model that Cindy talked about. Uh, making sure we add the capacity that we need to keep all of this other investment moving through the community for positive job growth, et cetera. Um, but also I just think it's really important that juxtaposition is there. We are going to have to be adaptable. Over the course of the seven to 10 years, but not so adaptable that we miss our mission. So it's, you know, that the notion that there's only one path forward, we're going to have multiple paths forward on this, but we also can't let this transformational work overshadow. The other things we're working on to council member Palmer, council member Dennis's point, we do need to continue to deliver, not just as Rochester, but as. A region, which is where those housing needs lie. And of course, a lot of those will happen in Rochester. But regionally, there will need to be additional housing capacity, um, in order to support hopefully additional jobs and resources and opportunities for people who already live here. But if we are not really focusing on our path forward and get distracted. It is entirely possible, despite all of the capacity that you build for us to not meet the moment because we start. Having the shiny object syndrome or something new comes and we say, um, something in our office that we often say, we have to say. No to the good, to say yes to the best. And there are going to be moments during this time where we have to say, not yet. That doesn't mean never. It means not yet based on what we need to deliver over the next six to nine to 12 months. And that we know we need to keep doing in order to support the community, um, delivering our day-to-day service, but also delivering on this, um, transformational moment. So. I think it's just important to keep and leave with the notion that as long as we keep our, we can do anything. Sort of mentality, we also need to know we can't do everything. If we're going to do anything, we have to do it really well. And then continue to iterate and add more when we know that we have the capacity to deliver and not start things and not finish. So. I just think those are things to, that are important to leave the organization with. Many people watch this meeting who, um, uh, work in this and other city-owned buildings. Um, not all of them come in person, uh, but also remind ourselves that, you know, we have significant opportunities over the next. 50 years that we're going to need to set ourselves up for, and you have the opportunity now and appreciate the feedback to do that in a. Maybe a different way than it felt like you had the opportunity when you joined the council. Um, with, with some of the capacity issues that, that we're continuing to work through. So appreciate all of the comments. Appreciate there's lots of ways for us to get there and, um, appreciate that we, over the last couple of meetings have tried to define. Um, what that path is and what we need to achieve over the next seven to 10 years to set us on a course for success over the next 50.
All right. Thanks for a great presentation and discussion colleagues. And Ms. Elms, do you want to walk us through the study session schedule?
Certainly. Um, well, look at that and it magically appears. Uh, so, uh, mentioned earlier, we do have, uh, the next study session meeting on the 26th and just a reminder for your council meeting. Um, uh, next week, that is on the 19th, uh, a Wednesday because Monday is a holiday. Um, but we do have an update, um, significant number of updates from Chow Matella and her team. Um, on some, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, um, items. Uh, an update on the comprehensive plan. We're in the five-year update for that. So some information about, uh, what we're going to be working on through that. And then as was mentioned by, uh, deputy administrator Steinhauser, uh, economic development incentives and, and we're in a. Unique position in our market, uh, with the types of financial tools that are available and that are constrained in the private sector to be looking at, how do we. Uh, try to catalyze things differently. Um, and then of course in March, we would be, um, getting an update on, uh, you, I know you've seen the. Eight-step plan from FIRE, but there's a whole bunch of other. Background information to that, um, that would be beneficial. And then, um, some updates on some other information. So. We'll have more than one topic next time.
Uh, just an observation for, uh, it just struck me, we're going to try to do three items and that, that's good. But the comp plan just down for 30 minutes. It just felt like it was being undersold. Maybe it's just an introduction to what's happening, but it jumped out at me as. Um, a bad balance of time, spending our time.
It's more of an introduction to what you can expect over the next period of time. So it's similar to when you had seen some of the shorter updates throughout when we were updating the UDC or the zoning map. Um, this is really sort of introductory to what is forthcoming.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.